I'd like to call to order the East Point City Planning Commission meeting for January 11th, 2024. Secretary, please call the role.
Mr. Broll.
Present.
Ms. Julinski, present. Ms. Moody?
Present.
And the absence of, oh, Chairman DeHaan.
Present.
And the absence noted for Mr. Lubeck and Ms. Naylor.
Yeah, I did not receive an email on Ms. Naylor. So Commissioner Lubeck is excused at this point, and then Ms. Naylor might be coming in. Moving on to the first hearing of the public. At this point, you have three minutes to speak on any topic that you wish to speak on. As we do not have a public hearing this evening, we are free to, oh, sorry. Approval of the agenda. I was getting a little aggressive. All right. May I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda for Thursday, January 11th.
We have motion.
Twenty twenty-four.
Do we have support?
Support.
We have motion and support. Secretary, please call the role.
Ms. Merity?
Yes.
Ms. Julinski, yes. Mr. Broll?
Yes.
Chairman DeHaan?
Yes. Now, we will go on to the first hearing of the public. You have three minutes to speak on any topic that you wish. There is a piece of paper and a pen. Please write your name legibly and speak into the microphone. Please also make sure the microphone is turned on.
Gary Myron, East Point resident and Nine Mile resident for many, many years. And that's my concern is the Nine Mile going down to three lanes. If you want to see what it's like, go down Nine Mile now. This is for, just not for you guys, but out there. Go down there now because there's only one lane on one side. It's a mess. That's the way it's been all summer long on both sides. And it's been hard getting in and out of businesses. It was rough. Traffic is all backed up. Sometimes I've seen it from Nine Mile all the way to the fire station or Grashit to the fire station. And that's what you're going to get because it's just, that's the way Nine Mile is. It's got to stay the five lanes. A lot of people right now pass in the left turning lane. Just think what it's going to be like then. If nobody sees that, then they're not on Nine Mile all the time. I'm on Nine Mile two to six times a day. Some people live on the west side of Nine Mile. They don't deal with that. They'll take Stevens or Ten. They got to drive down Nine Mile. All these experts and that say this, that, and the other thing. Well, the real world is drive down Nine Mile any time of the day, rush hour, nighttime, daytime, in the morning, afternoon. Experience it. Everybody's going to come up and speak on this topic, is experiencing it. It's just not, you know, oh, this is the way it is. They experience people turning into parking lots. They turn in, people cutting in front of them, people turning into restaurants, the buses. Well, if they have the bus lane to turn into, the bus has got to slow down. They're going to hold up traffic, and they're going to go in the left turning lane to pass everything. Think smart. Thank you.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Happy New Year for those of you who haven't seen since last year. I hate to use your time to be a broken record, but I think I'm going to have to use every opportunity I can to be a broken record, to get people to wake up in this city and get involved. I don't know how we do it, but I know we need to get people involved in everything that's going on in the city, from city planning to the council, especially the school board. I'm not sure how many of you are aware of the dilemma that's facing the school board. I'm going to keep talking about it. We cannot have failing school system and no one address it, along with three pending lawsuits, and no one wants to talk about it. This is heartbreaking because we have students who need our attention, and they need to be our focus rather than so many other things. And hopefully, if there are people watching or listening, they'll hear me. If they don't, I just repeat it some other time. But I love being in the city, and I want it to be a vital, thriving place that people love being here in. And I don't see it. I live east of Grashit, and I travel Nine Mile all the time. So I'm going to be extremely upset, and I know this body doesn't have anything to do with it. Let's make that clear. I know that. But I'm going to be at the forefront of the battle to keep it viable for those of us who live east of Grashit, doing whatever I can. And I want you to have a good evening. I'm going to take off. Thank you for your time.
Does anyone else wish to be heard? Does anyone else wish to be heard? Does anyone else wish to be heard? Seeing none. Moving on, we are closing the hearing of the public, and we shall move on to item four, approval of the minutes. I did receive a phone call from Mr. Laland, and he wished to have the minutes adjusted. The minutes state that he resigned. His term actually expired, so he does not like the phrase resign, which is inappropriate. So if the minutes can please reflect that he just handled the end of his term. Does anybody else have any adjustments or questions about the minutes? Can we get a motion for approval of the minutes with the adjustment that was just mentioned?
Make that motion.
We have motion. Do we have support?
Support.
We have motion and support. Secretary, please call the role.
Mr. Broll?
Yes.
Ms. Julinski, yes. Ms. Moody?
Yes.
Yes.
Chairman DeHaan?
Yes. We don't have a public hearing this evening, so we will move on to new business. Item A, the election of officers. So let's start with the chair. Does anybody wish to nominate somebody for the chair?
Mr. DeHaan, I will nominate you for chair position.
We have a nomination. Do we need a support on that? Do we have support?
Support.
We have motion and support. I will accept the nomination. Can we have a vote, please?
Ms. Julinski, yes. Ms. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Broll?
Yes.
Chairman DeHaan, do you accept?
I accept. Moving on to vice chair. Does anybody wish to make a nomination for vice chair?
I'll make a motion to select Mr. Lubeck for vice chair.
In the interest of transparency and clarity, Commissioner Lubeck has emailed us to say that he would be willing to accept any nomination. So we have a nomination. Do we have support of that nomination?
I support.
We have motion and support. Secretary, please call the role.
Mr. Broll?
Yes.
Ms. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Julinski, yes. Chairman DeHaan?
Yes. Moving on to secretary.
I would like to nominate Ms. Julinski. Secretary?
I second that.
Stop being so fast. I didn't hear you go that fast for anything else.
Hey, I tried to jump over approval of the agenda, moving on. We have motion and we have support. Do you accept before we go for a vote?
What's the pay?
Undying gratitude and service to your city.
And to spend my Thursdays with you guys, the first of the month, I'm in.
Okay. All right. Secretary, please call the role.
Ms. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Broll?
Yes.
Chairman DeHaan? I accept. Thank you.
And I'm sure Mr. Lubeck is agreeing from TV land or whatever he's watching us on. Moving on to item B, consider approving site plan extension request from Marijuana Provisioning Center at 24545 Grashit. This would be the Common Citizen project. Ms. Barajewski.
Sure. Thanks, and congratulations, everyone, on your new roles or existing roles, reinstated roles. So we've seen the similar requests with holistic health due to delays in construction and supply chain challenges. A one-year turnaround for a newly constructed project is not feasible. We have a draft motion within the packet, and we also have the Director of Government Affairs, Michael Beck, within the room today to represent Common Citizen. Let me know if you'd like me to read any of the draft motion or go into any details about this item.
Do we have any questions or concerns? It seems pretty cut and dry.
No questions.
No questions or concerns on my part. Would you read the draft motion that you have prepared, please?
Certainly. Motion to grant a one-year extension to 24545 Grashit Marijuana Provisioning Center for good cause due to the fact that a one-year turnaround for new construction is unfeasible, by which the developer has until March 2nd, 2025, to submit a revised site plan and file for a building permit.
Just in the interest of clarity, there's only one extension granted, correct? Or is this, you know, we don't want to see this year after year getting extensions?
One extension is allowed to be granted.
Okay.
So it was approved previously in March, is that correct, of 2023?
2023.
I mean, that's why it's March 2nd, 2025.
Actually, you know what, Chair? We could change that to by which the developer has one year. Well, their site plan was approved March 2nd, 2023. But when they, yeah, so I would say March 2nd, 2025, or today's date, within one year of today's date.
I mean, I'm fine with March 2nd, 2025.
Okay. I'm okay with it as well.
I'm okay with it as well.
Sheila, you good?
Yes.
All right. Does somebody wish to make that motion?
I would like to make a motion to grant a one-year extension to 224545 Grashit Avenue, Marijuana Provisioning Center for good cause due to the fact that a one-year turnaround for new construction is unfeasible, by which the developer has until March 2nd, 2025, to submit a revised site plan and file for a building permit.
We have motion. Do we have support?
I'll support.
We have motion and support. Secretary, please call the role.
Ms. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Broll?
Yes.
Ms. Julinski, yes. Chairman DeHaan?
Yes. Okay. Moving on to item C, review of city of East Point draft 2024 capital improvement plan. Who is leading the charge on this item?
Chair, it's our city engineer, Ryan Kern. Thank you, Ryan.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Ryan Kern with Anderson, Eckstein, and Westrick. It doesn't seem like it was that long ago I was here to present the capital improvement plan against time is flying here, but we have the updated draft capital improvement plan in front of you here for the next six years, going through the fiscal year 2930. As in the past, we've broken this out into four different categories for infrastructure. We have the major street category, the local street category, water, and then sewer. So just to give you a briefing on what's been presented in your packet tonight and the major street fund here for the next six years, we do maintenance on the major streets as well as the local streets, and in the program, we've always had joint sealing programs and pavement marking programs within the capital improvement plan. We did do a joint sealing program here. It was a two-year program that we wrapped up a year ago. We didn't do a program this past year, but we're looking at doing a program that would address the major streets in the next fiscal year, and then we would go back to the local streets for a couple of years, go back to the major streets, but try to do some joint sealing on some of the good and fair-rated streets here every year. And pavement markings on the major streets. It's been a few years since we've done a program, so we'd be looking at doing that again here every other year. We have the Kelly Road Traffic Signal Modernization Project. We're putting that back out to bid. That was bid out last year. Those are for new traffic signals on Kelly Road at Tofer, Nine Mile, and Stevens. Those bids did come in high. As part of that, we were looking at doing the decorative mast arms at the Nine Mile intersection and then just the standard box span like you see on Long Nine Mile and Ten Mile that we did here about a year ago or so. We've scaled that back to eliminate the decorative mast arms at the Nine Mile intersection and just do the box span at all three intersections in order to get a lower price on that. That's going back out to bid through MDOT, and the city's getting a $450,000 grant for that work. This past year, we finally started construction on Nine Mile. It's a three-phase project. We're about 95% done with the first phase west of Grashit. Florence cement will be back in in the spring to address the restoration of some sidewalk work that still needs to be done, and that job will be complete. We have two more phases. The second phase as of right now is anticipated to be constructed later this year, and the third phase in 2025. As you know, council has directed us to look at doing a road diet along Nine Mile, and we're redesigning those plans, and we have a public hearing scheduled for February 6th during the city council meeting to discuss that. There's the potential that that, depending on which way we go, if we continue to go the five-lane route or go the road diet route, there could be some delays with that project. But we are still moving forward with the final two phases of Nine Mile. The city is getting federal aid funding. Eighty-one point eight-five percent of the construction cost is being funded, both with the phase that's being completed now and the second phase. And then the city did get a federal earmark to complete the construction of the third phase all the way to I-94. The city is also going to be getting federal aid assistance for improvements along Hayes from Stevens to Ten Mile in fiscal year 2026. That will involve concrete patching. And then we did try to get some federal aid funding for the reconstruction of Tofer from Kelly to Beaconsfield. We were trying to get some funding for fiscal year 2025. We're competing with all the communities in McComb County for that work. We weren't able to get funding for that project in 2025. McComb County be asking for a call for projects for their transportation improvement program for fiscal years 27 through 29 later this year, and we anticipate to apply for that again and try to get funding in fiscal year 27 to reconstruct Tofer.
I don't mean to interrupt, but I have a question.
Sure.
So Hayes from Stevens to Ten Mile, it's not very bad. There are far worse streets in this community. The section of Tofer between Kelly and Beaconsfield is not bad. You want to see bad roads, look at some of the interior roads between Nine and Stevens. Look at Phlox, which is a major road from Hoss to Ten Mile. It is a pond when it rains. It's an ice rink if it freezes. How do you determine these roads? Because the two roads that you just mentioned don't need it to me.
So those streets, you're speaking of our local roads. So there's two different sets of funding. There's the major road fund and the local road fund. The federal aid dollars that we do get for assistance can only go towards major roads, and there are certain major roads that those can go to. So there's what they call the national functional classification. The federal government classifies those major streets that are eligible for federal funding. So in East Point, the only streets that are eligible for federal funding are Old Eight Mile, Nine Mile, Hayes, Kelly. I might be missing one there, but there's, Stevens and Tofer.
How is it arbitrarily chosen, though? What is the criteria?
They have to be major arterial streets. Depends on traffic counts, the higher, those streets with higher traffic counts. You know, usually the half-mile, half-mile roads are typically those that are considered federal aid eligible. The local streets, there's no federal aid assistance available for the local streets, and the only other way the city gets funding for streets is through the Act 51 funds. The majority of the Act 51 funding that you get is for the major road system. That Act 51 funding is not only for capital improvements, but it also has to cover all the maintenance, the salting, the street cleaning. Lot of the maintenance, lot of the funds for the local road system get eaten up with that maintenance. There's not a lot of money left over for capital improvements, and that's not just you. That's every community in Michigan that faces that problem.
I believe Councilwoman Bishad like would like to speak.
I've got a quick question, too, as well. I heard you say Eight Mile, and then you were talking about the half-mile roads in between. What about Ten Mile? And in particular, if you notice, from Grashit to Hayes, it's an absolute, it's a pothole city. It's terrible.
Ten Mile is a county road.
So it's county funding?
It's under the jurisdiction of McComb County Department of Roads, correct? We have talked with the county, and I know Commissioner Lucido has been, discussions with the county about trying to do something with Ten Mile west of Grashit. As of right now, the county has said that if anything were to be done there, the city would have to participate in that as well. They'd be looking at a 50-50 participation, which would cost the city roughly $3 million. It's probably a $6 million project to reconstruct Ten Mile west of Grashit. The city would have to foot $3 million, which we don't have. That's basically where that stands right now, but whether the county can get some assistance to do that, but yeah, that is up to the county, and that's Ten Mile all the way across is the county's jurisdiction.
Sorry for interrupting.
No, no problem.
I get a little peeved when I think of all these roads in the city that are just so bad.
I hear you. I hear you.
And we're fixing roads that really don't need major work. It just seems like a waste of dollars, but please, continue on.
Sure. And the local road fund, we do budget $700,000 a year for patching on the fair-rated streets. That's trying to keep those streets in a good or fair rating, because if they fall into a poor rating and it's too far gone to where we can't do any patching or any maintenance work, the cost to reconstruct a street is usually about three times higher. So we're trying to save those streets, extend the design life of those streets as much as possible. We've done that pavement patching program now for about five years now. We've started in the southwest corner of the city, and we've been zigzagging up through the city. So we're about 50% done going through the city now. Last year, we finished up. All the streets south of Nine Mile have been addressed under the pavement patching program that were rated fair, and we did get into a few streets north of Nine Mile west of Grashit towards the end of this last construction season. Next year, we'll be addressing fair-rated streets west of Grashit between Nine and Stevens that remain, and then we'll continue going east between Nine and Stevens. By the 2930 fiscal year, we anticipate we'll have gone through the entire city at that point, and then we can start back over through that cycle. We do try to get some community development block grant funding to help with the local street program. We have been successful the last few years with getting money to do some last few years with getting money to do some streets. There's $150,000 available each year through CDBG to do street improvement projects. We have done a block of Roxanna, a block of Almond. We just approved earlier this week at council to resurface a block of Springer. And we do have a public hearing at the next council meeting to discuss potential road projects to apply for in 2025. But we anticipate that we'll get at least one road project each year with some, with assistance through CDBG. We also are looking with the budget that we do have for local roads. We're trying to do a street improvement project every other year with the funding that we have. This year, we're potentially looking at doing the reconstruction of Ash Street from Kelly to Beaconsfield, which was rated a 1 out of 10, one being poorest rated street. That's currently a concrete street with an asphalt cap. We would be looking at doing a full concrete reconstruction on that street, and then every other year, determine another poor-rated street to reconstruct. I don't know if there's any other questions on the road system.
Does anybody have any?
I have a quick question for you.
Sure.
What is the, the life expectancy for the, the patching?
Patching, usually anywhere from 10 to 20 years. Again, it's going to depend on how heavily used that street is. Most of these local streets, obviously, it's just the local traffic. It's not getting a lot of use, but it's usually about 10 to 20 years on the patch program.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. With the patching, that, is that, and forgive me, but is that where they take out the concrete and put in the new concrete? It's not, so I know there's a street redmond where they have done the ceiling, the black seal, and it comes out a lot, and then chunks of concrete are coming out. So the ceiling isn't working, and you just have all that little miniscule debris everywhere.
You're talking about the joint sealing?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. That sounds like it's probably a joint issue there. I know a lot of concrete that was placed in the 90s, even in the early 2000s, whether it was a reconstruct or a patch program, experienced a lot of deterioration very quickly. And that deterioration starts at the joints and works its way out. It, it kind of sounds like that might be what's going on over in that area.
So how does that get fixed or put on a list or?
It, either, either, again, depending on how bad it is, whether patching would be necessary, joint repairs, or potentially a full reconstruct, depending upon how bad the street is.
Yeah, the, the joint ceiling comes out, and then chunks of concrete go. There's a lot of traffic on that street. It's, you know, right in front of the school.
Right.
And don't laugh, but I sweep the street all the time because all that little debris just drives me out of my mind.
Sure, sure. No, I know there's a lot of streets in the city that have that similar situation as well.
Let me ask you one other question. When it comes to the patching, to what degree of severity before you decide to do the patching? Because I know on Raven, they've been doing a lot of patchwork on Raven, but there's still areas that is a dip, but they're not, they're not working on that.
Yeah, I'm familiar with Raven Street. We did do some patching on Raven Street back in 2020. There's a, I know there were a couple of blocks that we didn't address along Raven because the rating was so poor. It, we'd basically be patching 80% of the street. It would be more cost-effective to do a full reconstruct within that section. And I think that's the section that you're, you're talking about. But typically, if it's, if we're going to be removing more than 40% of the street, it's more, it's cost-effective to just reconstruct the entire street. And so we're looking at doing the street. So every three years, we evaluate the streets and give it, give each street a rating or each street segment. So from intersection to intersection, we give it a rating, 1 through 10, 1 being the worst, 10 being the best. With these patch programs, we're looking at the streets that are rated 4 through 6. So if it's gone below a 4, it needs to be either resurfaced or reconstructed.
Thank you.
Is there an accountability mechanism? Because if some of these concrete jobs are, concrete is falling apart, patching isn't working, you know, if, is there an accountability with some of these companies?
We have a two-year warranty on all our projects. The, the issue that we had in the 90s, early 2000s, the alkali silica reactivity, there's been measures taken to address that. So we don't see that happening anymore on the streets. But yeah, at that, at that time, no, there really wasn't. You just had that two-year warranty.
So is a two-year warranty the, the best you guys have been able to get? Because two, a two-year warranty, that's only two winters. You're not going to see a destruction of the concrete within two years.
Yeah.
You're not going to see it, you know, erupting for about four, five years. Is the two-year warranty the best that?
That's typical in the industry.
That's a typical.
Yeah, yeah.
We're not a typical community. It might be worth, it might be worth having your, whoever does the negotiation to ask for more. All they can do is say no.
Yeah, the costs are going to go up, too. The more warranty you have on it, the costs are going to go up as well.
Sometimes you have to wonder, is it more economical to pay the, the higher costs at the beginning instead of at the end?
You jumping over dollars to save nickels? Sorry about the interruption.
No, no problem.
Please continue.
On the water side, a lot of change since the last, since I presented this last year. The city's been fortunate enough to get quite a bit of grant money here in the last year for water improvement. So we did just finish Grashit from Eight to Nine Mile. We did Beechwood from Juliana to Nine Mile, and we, as far as water main replacements, and we replaced all the lead water surfaces, roughly 100 lead water surfaces on Tuscany from Nine Mile to Stevens, and that was through a drinking water revolving fund loan program. The city got $2 million in grant funding through that, and then the other $6 million was through the drinking water revolving fund loan through the state of Michigan. It's a 20-year loan at 1.875% interest. So what we're showing there on the capital improvement program, starting this next fiscal year, would be the first annual payment back towards that 20-year loan. We've applied for additional drinking water revolving fund money, and we're successful in phased, getting Phase 2 or in the process of designing that currently. It's an $18 million project. Out of that, $8.5 million, we got grant money, ARPA funding. And we got another $500,000 in infrastructure, federal infrastructure dollars for lead water service replacement. And the city was able to get $500,000 in loan money as well at 2% interest this next year for lead water service replacements. And then the city's, over a three-year period here, will kick in the remaining $8.5 million to do that. That will complete the rest of Grashit. So west side of Grashit from Nine to Ten Mile, and then the east side of Grashit from Tofer to Ten Mile, the water mains will be replaced. About 10 years ago, from Eight Mile to Tofer on the east side, Grashit was replaced. So this program will finish, will replace all of the water main, the larger diameter water main on both sides of Grashit that was installed in the 1920s. We'll have all new water main along Grashit. It also includes several residential streets where the water mains will be replaced. Again, those were all installed in the 1920s. And then we're looking to apply for a third phase of drinking water revolving fund loan money here this year that hopefully we would get in fiscal year 2025 that would address lead water service replacements. The city did get a $10 million grant thanks to Senator Kleinfeld's office to do lead water service replacements. To date, the city of East Point's been pretty proactive with lead water service replacements compared to most communities. Over 2,200 lead water services existed in the city, and we've, to date, have replaced 805 of those. About 35% of the lead services have been replaced. The $10 million grant that we're getting through the state or the earmark through the state should address about 1,100 services, which, which will leave us with just over 300 services left. And that's what we're looking to do with the third phase of the drinking water revolving fund loan is to get funding to replace those remaining lead services. And hopefully, within the next three to five years, we can have all those lead water surfaces replaced here in the city. The city does have until the year 2034 to replace all those services, so we'll definitely be well ahead of the game on that. We're also, last week, or actually, this past Monday, we started the replacement of the water main on Nine Mile ahead of the second phase of the road reconstruction project from Grashit to Tuscany. So we're replacing that water main. And then next winter, we'll be replacing the water main from Tuscany to Kelly along Nine Mile as well. And then we've got, set aside for future years, additional water main replacements as they come along here, starting in fiscal year 27. On the sewer side, we're wrapping up a citywide sanitary sewer cleaning and televising program. We've got about 85% of the city that's been cleaned and televised and get a better idea of what the current state is of the infrastructure underground with the sewer, the sanitary sewer system. And then in 2022, we did start doing some sewer rehabilitation. We spent $1.5 million in doing some open cut, sectional open cut repairs and sanitary sewer lining on those areas that we found to be critical. Most of those areas were on the west side of Grashit through the city. We have in the capital improvement plan to do roughly $750,000 of additional sewer repairs, starting east of Grashit and working our way up through the city as, right behind as we clean and televise sewers. But we'd be looking at addressing the critical and high locations now. But there's several million dollars worth of sewer repair that is needed. A lot, just like with the drinking water revolving fund loan, there is a revolving fund loan for sewer, sewer improvements as well. We did apply for that last year. We tried to apply for $5.2 million in sewer repairs last year. We weren't successful in getting that last year, and again, we're competing with every community in the state. And there were several communities that applied just because of all the federal infrastructure dollars that are available through that program. Again, this year, we have that same opportunity. So we're going to, again, apply and try to get some money, additional funding to do sewer improvements as well. And then we do have a budget in there every year for catch basin repairs as well. If you go around the city, you'll see where there's certain catch basins that are failing, and we try to repair those as best as we can. And with that, if you have any other additional questions, I'll be happy to answer it.
Anything? Moody?
No.
Okay.
All right.
You're off the hook.
All right. Thank you. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Thank you. Moving on to item E. Ms. Braschowski.
Thank you. There are two entities that require the annual report of the Planning Commission, and that is the Michigan Planning Enabling Act of PA 33, 2008, and then also the Michigan Economic Development Corporation Redevelopment Ready Community Program. So in front of you today, we have our annual report. And another component of the annual report that is guided by us through the Michigan Planning Enabling Act and the RRC Redevelopment Ready Community Program is an audit of how we're fulfilling our master plan duties. So additionally, within this summary of Planning Commission meetings, we also have a summary of how we're progressing within our master plan and how we're progressing within the redevelopment ready community program. So if we take a tour through this document, we have the, am I getting feedback? I don't know. I don't know why. I look to you. Hug your ears? No, I'm just kidding. Should I continue?
Yes.
Okay. So if we take a tour through this document, we have the introduction and purpose and the summary of the Planning Commission meetings and all of the projects that we've participated in. So our first columns, the meeting date, and the second is the project type with the location. So let's see, we reviewed holistic health, both marijuana, medical marijuana provisioning center, also Common Citizen and Shark Tale Moses Roses. Then we also reviewed a drive-through, sorry, gas station. And then we expanded a site, or authorized expansion of an existing marijuana, oh, sorry, Marathon Gas Station. They wanted to expand their convenience store component. Then we also reviewed a event hall application and a car wash application. Again, we revisited the event hall application. We also reviewed an auto sales and existing repair facility application, a drive-through bank facility, who wanted to add that drive-through component to their existing facility. Another additional gas station, existing gas station, who needed to meet that special land use requirement because it did not have an existing special land use on file. We also reviewed a payment in lieu of landscaping policy. We authorized a Class A, our first ever Class A non-conforming designation, and we granted a extension of a site plan. And we also oversaw the approval of two complexes by Community Housing Network. So we're busy this year. Looking forward to more projects this upcoming year. And another component of the Michigan Planning Enabling Act asks us to provide an overview of our zoning ordinance changes. Again, this is also required in the redevelopment ready community program. So we, of course, did an overhaul of our zoning ordinance where we won an award. Anyone? Thanks.
Mugging for the camera.
Okay. And then we also have been performing updates to be more transparent, adjust our, our administration, our administrative processes, and then just changing our ordinance to reflect best practices as we continue this journey of having the best ordinance ever. So here are some summaries of additional chapters that we have amended. And then, as I mentioned, we go into the master plan review. This is required through the Michigan Planning Enabling Act and then also the redevelopment ready community program. So we take a tour of the goals. We have four goals within our master plan that we're going to talk about later on today. But we have, one category is neighborhoods, and then we have community building. And as we look through these goals, green means that we're, we're addressing the goals of the master plan. We are where we need to be. Yellow means we need to be adding a little bit more attention to these goals. And then red means that we need to be adding even more attention to these goals based on how the master plan categorizes it as priority and their timeline. So we've got neighborhoods, community building, business and industrial. The third one's coming up. Sorry, this is in booklet form. Oh, whoops. There we go. I feel like this mouse has a lag. Okay, mouse. Me? I don't know. I don't know. Business and industrial goals, and then transportation goals. Okay. We also want to be transparent in how the planning department's using their time. So we provide a progress report of the activities that we've completed. We have zoning administration. So we reviewed and approved about 20 business license applications per month. We also ensure at least three businesses have fulfilled their site plan obligations, and we connected with about like 20 property owners per week on how they can use their property. And this is all done, all of the X's over here signify that these tasks are done during office hours. Economic development, we've met with at least 35 developers. I'm sorry, you guys, I just noticed that everyone's left the room. Moving forward, we've met with about 35 developers on how they can use their property. Just, these are formal meetings. We've streamlined the business license process. We've created the Modern Nine logo and also the Modern Nine presentation for the business stakeholder meeting in February of last year. And let's go into Planning Commission meetings. We facilitated 12 Planning Commission meetings.
It's an error.
Sorry?
That's an error. It was 11, because the May meeting was missed, unless you're including special meetings.
Chair, we're including special meetings.
Okay.
So the Planning Commission met 12 times in 2023, including the one special meeting. We prepared and reviewed and coordinated about 20 development plan applications. And going into bike and pedestrian, or pedestrian infrastructure, which is on the other booklet. Oh, thank, thank you. Appreciate that. Well, you have it in front of you, too, but I'll just be transparent for the viewers at home. Yeah, thank you. We are creating the Kelly Road Corridor Plan in conjunction with, in tandem with many other organizations. I know the City of Harper Woods and the City of Detroit are involved. Our city engineer is involved. The Southeast Michigan Council of Governments is involved. Of course, our planning and economic development departments are involved. So there's a lot of cross coordination between, between organizations to create this Kelly Road Corridor Plan. We also continue to seek funding for Stevens Road Bike Lane. Moving forward, we've supported green stormwater infrastructure. So we've identified opportunities and add, to add green infrastructure like bio swales and rain gardens to improve water filtration and mitigate flooding along Nine Mile. And we've also secured some funding in partnership.
So in reference to the website, if you were to go to look at agendas and minutes for our commission, minutes stop, I can't remember what year it stopped, maybe 2019, 2017, and there is nowhere on there that it says that you have to look at the agenda to show prior minutes. I mean, I understand we don't want to put the minutes in two sections, although I think that it should be, because I think that's more transparent, that we should have minutes segregated from agendas, but there's nowhere on there does it state that you have to look somewhere else to find minutes. Ms. Holman.
Mr. Chair, if I may, yes, we are aware of that, and so we are fixing all the records. As you know, our administrative specialist left for another opportunity, so we are in the process of hiring, but that is one of the top things on the list. We also, you know, need to get some other things up there, but we are aware of that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Moving on.
Thank you. So that was our annual report, and there's a second component to this, is the proposed work plan. This is our work plan, our proposed work plan for 2024. This is where we identify what steps we need to do to maintain redevelopment ready certification, and also how we can continue to implement the master plan and any other additional items that deem, that are of importance deemed by the Community and Economic Development Director and myself as the planner, and other folks have participated in creating this document. So we have the work plan, let's see here, and then the Redevelopment Ready Community Program requirements, which you saw last time we met with our community planner Stephanie Pena. But the items in orange are the ones that we are, we still need to address, or no, sorry, that we are actively addressing. Items in orange are actively addressing and almost complete, and the items in white are the ones that we still need to complete to maintain certification, and we need to complete these by December 31st, 2024? Okay, January 2025? Oh, December 2025? We have one year? Okay. Moving forward to the master plan obligations, we have, again, a list of tasks that we deem important to continue implementing the master plan's vision, and we've broken this up by level of difficulty. Five is most difficult, one is the least difficult, what the recommended timeline is, estimated costs, and who's the lead for this project. If you wish, we can make this a worksheet and you can vote on it, but I know we have a packed agenda, so this is up to you, if you want to go by one by one. If not, I'll continue going.
Continue going.
Thank you. And additional recommendations outside of what the master plan already requires or recommends is implementing a style guide, providing an inventory of vacant land, meeting with realtors, scheduling a meeting and teaming up with realtors in the area so they can help implement the new zoning ordinance and address any planning and zoning questions as they act as facilitators in redevelopment. Update community plans, some of these are already listed in the master plan, but update the Parks and Recreation Plan, which will expire next, well, this year, actually, in 2024. We validate the Modern Nine Mile Plan and perhaps create a climate action plan. Other zoning ordinance changes that we see fit are to update the landscaping ordinance, which you've already discussed about, right-size those landscaping requirements, and provide green stormwater infrastructure. Community Economic Development Director McCain, do you want to say anything?
It's fine.
Oh, I thought you want, I thought you had something to say. Okay, thank you. Also, update some cities code of ordinances. There's a couple of things that we'd like to address, like the business licensing ordinance regarding mobile vendors after sales. We have our eye on the marijuana ordinance and continuing to implement Eagles Catalystic Community Initiative Checklist, and we have other economic development tools such as providing financing support and recruiting food and beverage businesses, including food trucks.
I think we have some input.
Mr. Chair, if I may, a couple of things on this report. Please ignore the costs, because some of these things are going to have to go out to bid, so ignore that as you approve things. It's my understanding that Rare has already has RFP out to update their parks maintenance plan. Mr. McCain is actually a board member.
Yeah, we reviewed, RFPs met and interviewed with them and have selected a firm, so there should be more information forthcoming about that in the coming months.
Okay. And I have lost my thought, sorry, on the last one that I was going to, but yeah, there's a couple of tweaks.
Okay. Moving on.
So that summarizes the work plan, and there's an agenda item to approve the annual You would approve this annual report if you see fit, and City Council would receive and file the annual report.
Commission, do we have a motion to approve the annual report for 2023?
I'll make that motion.
We have motion. Do we have support?
Have support.
We have motion and support. Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Broll?
Yes.
Ms. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Julinski, yes. Chairman DeHut?
Yes.
Moving on to item E.
I'm sorry, Chair, the motion that you stated was just for the 2023 annual report. Are you including the 2024 work plan as well?
Do you wish, Mr. Albright, do we need that in a separate motion?
I don't think it's necessary.
So should we amend the motion to include the 2024 work plan?
Yes.
Ms. Broll?
Addendum.
Okay.
Support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Julinski. Now we should move on to item E. Ms. Braszewski.
Thank you. This item, we review our 2019 master plan goals and objectives. This is a directive from our city manager, who wishes for the Planning Commission's feedback to inform City Council as they perform a goal-setting meeting and also maybe establish a budget, but they're looking for feedback from us on what we need to change for our master plan. And I know our training today, we're two articles related to what a master plan is. Do you want to spend a couple of minutes talking about what a master plan is before we provide?
Honestly, I am of an opinion that maybe this should be tabled for a full board. Do, what does the rest of the commissioners say about that? Because it's not right that just four people are giving input. This is a big deal, and it's an ever-evolving document, and I just don't think that four people alone should set the tone. We need to hear diverse opinions. So what does, what do my fellow commissioners think?
I'll support you on that.
Ms. Moody?
I will. I'll support you as well.
Ms. Julinski?
Chair, if I may, I do know that the City Council has a goal-setting agenda for January 23rd? Okay, 23rd. So that's why the city manager's looking for our feedback, and the city council's looking for our feedback on the master plan. I know that we'll have multiple conversations regarding the master plan update to come, but maybe if the chair and commission sees fit, we provide some feedback tonight?
Can I get some feedback from administration since they're the one asking? Is that okay? Ms. Holman? I just want to make sure, I just, this is too important to just rush through and...
I believe that, Mr. Chair, may I? I believe that is a very good point. We do have a goal-setting session, special meeting planned with council on the 23rd. You know, administration is very interested in the direction that council wants to take, so it may be worthwhile to see what their goals are and then bring it back to planning. Of course, everything relating to this would come to Planning Commission, but that would may...
So maybe there's an opportunity, as much as I hate to say this, a joint meeting at some point, hear what City Council has to say, and then put a joint meeting together potentially for, unless there's some sort of massive rush in March?
I think that's, oh, sorry, Chair?
Yes.
I think that's an excellent suggestion and helps us complete another RRC requirement from having joint meetings, just like we did at the end of last year.
Look at that, you're going to get more score on Stephanie Pena's thing. Well, I just think it's important, because you have a new city council, and they have, well, mostly new city council, and they have ideas, we have ideas, but more importantly, we just need everybody's voice, so...
And again, City Council at the top, I think it would be worthwhile to hear what their goals are and sort that out, and then, again, to, the joint meeting, it would be perfect.
Ms. Michelle, how do you feel about this? Do you think this is a fair and reasonable request?
You know, I'm the new person on council.
Understand, but you also deal with attorneys all the time, so...
So, I mean, I think the joint, the joint meeting is an ideal, especially with what Ian had mentioned, so I think it's an ideal idea to do, but...
Do you think your fellow council people would be in agreement to a joint meeting?
Well, I can't speak for everybody.
But you got to sell it to them, so...
But I can absolutely sell it, so...
Okay. All right. So I say we table this until after, until the February meeting.
Chair, if you don't mind, before I go to for a vote, I would like a feedback on the exercise itself so that we can prepare for a joint meeting, just if you, if you don't mind, if you see fit to, but if you like the layout of this, if you'd like some more of something else, do you want, do you want me to provide an overview of the exercise, or do you just wish to table entirely?
Part of me wants to table this, and I'd also like to get some, you know, so City Council's going to weigh in with what their vision is. I'd also, honestly, I'd like to get some vision from city administration. And, you know, there's three branches to this thought process. City administration, City Council, obviously, City Council makes final determination, but let's, let's get a broad array of opinion and thoughts. So I just think we should table this, unless you're all ready to jump out of the seat and strangle me for mentioning that.
Chair, it's up to you and your motions.
Well, Crew, what do you feel? Shall we table the whole thing?
No.
No? Okay. Mr. Broll?
I'd table it.
Ms. Moody?
I think I would table as well.
Your lone voice.
I'm all right with that.
All right, we're going to table.
Mr. Chair, there should be a vote on the tabling.
Yeah. Can I get a motion to table item E? Review the 2019 master plan goals and objectives, identify any missing elements, submit a recommendation to City Council on required revisions, on the basis that we do not have a full board here tonight and are seeking additional input.
Okay. Let's try this. I make a motion that we table the review of the 2019 master plan and objectives, identify and missing elements, submit a recommendation to City Council on required revisions, on the basis that there's not a full board tonight.
We have motion. Do we have support?
Mr. Chair, is that being tabled to the February meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, that should be included in the motion too. Thank you.
So I have to start all over?
No. You can just say...
And we're going to add to the February meeting.
Yes.
I'll support.
Secretary, we have motion and support. Please call the roll.
Ms. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Broll?
Yes.
Ms. Julinski, no. Chairman DeHut?
Yes.
Item F, this was put on the agenda at my behest, because I feel like anybody that's put the work in deserves a little acknowledgement. So, Ms. Braszewski, do you have a statement of appreciation for Mr. Laland, or is that being handled by city administration?
Chair, I do not have an official statement. I was hoping that everyone in this room would make a statement, and the minutes would reflect that, but let me know if you have any other items, any other ideas?
I think Ms. Holman might have something.
She's getting her steps in today.
Boy, is she.
Yes, boards and commissions can make a recommendation that acknowledgement and appreciation be made. We would need, I believe, per the ordinance, city attorney, that they need some, we need some details, and then it would be on the next City Council agenda. So if you make the motion, and then someone on the board, the board itself can provide just some details about length of term, some of the other, of course, for Mr. Laland, he has incredible history, but some of the other accomplishments and acknowledgements, and then that'll be presented to City Council.
Such a ruckus to get a plaque or a certificate. All right, I will gladly volunteer collecting data on Leo. Does anybody have anything that they wish to add to this? Ms. Holman, when, how much time do you need, or do you want to have it on for the February? Shall we do it for the February City Council meeting?
So agenda items would be due the Wednesday before a Tuesday City Council meeting, so as long as we could get information by the Wednesday before, we have a February 6th and a February 20th, what is the other one, Ian? So as long as we get it the Wednesday before, we'll put it on the next council agenda.
So do you want some fancy wordsmithing, or do you want bullet points, and then you'll have this, somebody massage it into a proper document?
Either or.
What's your preference?
Either or.
Okay. So do we need a motion for this?
I think it would be advisable to have a motion under the circumstances.
Yes.
All right. I will make the motion, because Leo is an amazing man.
Still is a guy. Still around.
Absolutely. So we recommend to City Council that a statement of appreciation for former Commissioner Leo Laland is done, or is, what was, whether would be the appropriate term, is enacted?
Just recognition? Of his service?
Recognition that he served out his term.
Okay. So provide a statement of appreciation for Commissioner Laland's years of service to this community.
Support.
Do we have motion and support? Secretary, please call the roll.
Chairman DeHut?
Yes.
Ms. Julinski, yes. Mr. Broll?
Yes.
Ms. Moody?
Yes.
Moving on to unfinished business, consider approving the Planning Commission Orientation Packet. Ms. Braszewski.
Thank you. We have an orientation packet that was produced by our Community Economic Development Office, and this is a requirement of the Redevelopment Ready Community Program, so we're just crossing one more box to maintain our certification. Let us know if you have any thoughts or additions.
When I looked through it, I didn't see anything. I don't know if anybody else saw something that I didn't.
Where did the packet come from? Who designed this? What was the, the history behind it? Chair?
Please.
Yeah, Commissioner Broll, I put it together along with some information that Ms. Holman had previously compiled, along with information from the RRC program.
Okay. Yeah, I think the pack is outstanding. I know when I started, I didn't have anything like this, and I collected data. This is an outstanding document in terms of what we're trying to achieve with the document, so I love it. It's great.
I concur with Mr. Broll.
I concur. I, actually, when I was reading this, I was like, hmm, that's a lot of good information. So it's really, really good. Let us know if you have any thoughts or additions.
When I looked through it, I didn't see anything. I don't know if anybody else saw something that I didn't.
Where did the packet come from? Who designed this? What was the the history behind it?
Chair?
Please.
Yeah, Commissioner Broll, I put it together along with some information that Ms. Holman had previously compiled along with information from the RRC program.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the pack is outstanding. I know when I started, I didn't have anything like this and I collected data. This is an outstanding document in terms of what what we're trying to achieve with the document, so I love it. It's great.
I concur with Mr. Broll.
I concur. I actually, when I was reading this, I was like, hmm, that's a lot of good information, so it's really, really good.
I concur with everything my peers have said. I do have one question on quorum. A majority of the members elected at the commission shall constitute a quorum. Do we need to include a number in there?
Um, Chair, what page are you on?
Uh, well, there's no page numbers on here. I'm under meeting procedures.
City Attorney, do you have anything to say about this?
No, I don't think that that a number is appropriate. There's there's seven members on the board. Quorum constitutes four, and so I don't think we need a number certain for that.
Okay. I think we're good. Does anybody wanna make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Support.
We have motion and support. Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Broll?
Yes.
Ms. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Yulinski, yes. Chairman DeHunt?
Yes. All right, moving on to the second hearing of the public. O ye few but faithful. We shall open the second hearing of the public. Does anybody wish to be heard? Anybody wish to be heard? Anyone wish to be heard? Seeing none. We shall close the second hearing of the public and we'll move on to training. You might change your mind on that third one.
Okay, well, our training today discusses what a master plan is and we have an article from the, sorry, I don't know why there's feedback, but from the American Planning Association, Michigan chapter, and we also have an article from within that and then within that about how to create goals and objectives and what the differentiation is between the two. And then we also have an article that our city manager sent via Community Economic Development Manager McCain. And that's the Redevelopment Ready Community Program packet that I tried to include in here, but I didn't have the privacy permissions to include it within the packet. So that was an article that, yeah, it looks like this. Okay, so I'll start off by summarizing some of the talking points and then we can go into any thoughts. Does that sound adequate, Chair? Okay. So a master plan is, as Michigan Economic, or sorry, the American Planning Association states, a document and policy guide designed to help communities create a vision of what they want their future to look like. So as we know, a master plan is a visionary guide and the zoning ordinance is the the teeth that regulates or implements the master plan. So the zoning ordinance is a policy document, but the master plan is a visionary document or a policy guide. It's not a policy within itself, but it's a guide for policy. And master plans are written and adopted by yours truly, the Planning Commission, so thank you for all your efforts here and looking forward to the progress of a really great plan in the future. And many master plans are written as one document, but as we've seen, like the city of Livonia, the city of Ferndale also has something like this, and definitely the city of Los Angeles, they have multiple plans within one master plan. So for example, the city of Ferndale has a sustainability plan that they that they combine within their master plan. The city of Los Angeles has a plan, a land use plan and a sustainability plan and a housing plan, all combined, and they call it the master plan. And this document says, for example, community may want to create a waterfront plan as part of their overall master plan. So the reason I point this out is we've heard some feedback from people so far that they would like to have a designated housing plan or a complete streets plan or a sustainability plan embedded within the master plan. And you know that master plans have different sections already, like there's an economic development section, there's a community overlook section, there's already like a transportation section. When we say that we wanna have a designated plan, this is just more details about in a more concentrated effort in articulating the vision of the community by this topic or by a certain topic. So it's just more of a concentrated, greater effort towards expanding on a category within the community that that you really want to pay more attention to or highlight moving forward. So the master plan is allowed for us and we're required to have a master plan and we're allowed to create a master plan by the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, which is summarized below in this article. And then moving forward, there's some subset articles embedded with this in this link. And some questions to ask ourselves as we talk through the master planning process is where are we now? Where do we want to go? How do we get there? And what will it be like when we implement the plan? When the plan becomes real, what does our community look like? And that can help us identify where we want to go and how we will get there. This article also talks about the difference between a goal and an objective. So a goal is more general and then the objective is more specific. And the objective contains indicators to measure how we are going to progress this this overarching goal or overarching theme. So with that, do you have any questions or talking points?
Team?
Um, Chair, another model too I really like that's not terribly local, but at least Michigan based. Kalamazoo has a really great set of different community plans, which includes their master plan, but also vision, complete streets, sustainability. It's, the website is imaginekalamazoo.com, so just another thing to reference and to look at for inspiration. Thanks.
Certainly things that we can talk about in a joint meeting.
I guess I do have one question. The prior master plan, you know, has a certain layout. Was that, would it be fair to say that that was driven by McKenna and McKenna's experience? I mean, McKenna pretty much put that together. Is that accurate statement? I know there was input in in data collection, but the layout and, you know, the sections, if you will, was determined by McKenna with input from, you know, other groups.
Chair, yeah, that's a great question. So each master plan is different from, by each community because the real fuel for the plan is brought to us by the engagement within the community. And I should I should reinstate the importance of a master plan because not every day policymakers get to sit down and engage with the community about what they wanna see moving forward. So mass, the master plan and also the nine mile strategic corridor plan and any plan really helps policymakers make an immediate at a glance decision without having to do all that extensive community engagement per each policy that they decide on. Because that will just be a huge time delay if we if we engage in that method. So we use the master plan as a fill-in to represent the community voice and direction. So the the content within the master plan itself is brought to us by the community, but the overall layout is something that is guided by the Michigan Planning Enabling Act and also McKenna's touch on how to address the Michigan Planning Enabling Act. The Michigan Planning Enabling Act, if you ever wanna sit down and read it, it has a list of criteria that we have to address when we create a master plan, so that helps us form the structure.
Thank you.
I have a question for you, Mara. So remember at the Grasset Cruze and you had it in the city hall as well when you guys did the boards of and took community opinions about what they wanted to see, how they wanted things to look? How much of that did we incorporate into the master plan? Do you remember when, you know, you had different pictures of different, yeah? Do you remember?
Yes, that's also a great question. So that is called a visual preference exercise. And I I was not part of the master plan process, but I have read the master plan. And I do believe that visual preference exercises were used to create this plan. You didn't have boards and dots? Yeah, I know, I'm kidding. Okay, well, that's a tool to engage with the community. However, the one that you're speaking of in particular is related to the zoning ordinance. And the zoning ordinance update was after the implementation adoption of the master plan. The master plan was adopted in 2019, so this activity, thank you for bringing it to the table, is a great activity. We received a lot of great feedback to help us guide the creation of the zoning ordinance and reevaluate or strengthen our our concept of what the master plan is envisioning. But that was done in 2023.
Would that data still be relevant if we go to make changes to the master plan?
Of course.
Okay.
I liked that. I thought that was good.
Thank you for the feedback.
There wasn't, you know, in reflecting back on the master plan when we finally put it to bed, the the document that lived forever was like the song that never ended. I feel like there needed to be a little bit more community engagement, though. I remember going to the eight mile residence, they do, I don't know if they still have it, the block group or?
No, that's just been.
All right, well, that's gone. And I I did come to an event that they had here at city hall, but the people that were part of it were city employees that just happened to live in the city. I just feel like we need to catch a broader net and get a little bit more engagement. This this is going back a long time. We just need more engagement.
Chair?
Yes.
We agree. That's one of the priorities for city administration in particular, including myself, our community engagement manager, Juanita Walltower, and our community development fellow, as well as the planning department. So we hear you and in just general day-to-day business as well as in current and future planning processes. That is something that we're trying to uplift and get more voices, more diverse voices into those processes.
I mean, we have plenty of social media pundits that know everything. Don't get me started on that. I've been engaged with one of them. But if people have to get away from their phone and actually put their face into the mix and be part of the process versus part of the chorus of craziness that just complains about everything. So I I just hope that whatever we do, we do more public engagement, whether it's the Grasset Cruze, that was a great idea, whether it is music in the park, anything need, we need more community involvement and engagement in this process. So I'm off my soapbox on that.
That's been a real challenge, though.
It is.
Prior master plans to get anybody from the community engaged in this, in the discussion. So good luck on that endeavor.
I don't know. We got a thumbs up from her. I don't know what we did. All right. I think we are done with that. Moving on to Commissioner comments. We will start with Ms. Holman. Ms. Broziewski.
Yeah, Happy New Year, everyone. Looking forward to our master planning session in February and hopefully a joint session in March. Just so you know, I'll be sending some sample plans like the Kalamazoo Plan, Livonia Plan and Los Angeles Plan so you can have an understanding of how, what we can obtain within this document and what we can ask for. Sometimes that's helpful for us to set our goals and objectives. And then I'll also send you again the summary of the visual preference boards from our our zoning ordinance workshop. Other than that, congratulations again on the reelection and Happy New Year, yeah.
Mr. McCain?
Good evening, Commission. Couple of things. First of all, Happy New Year. Hope you all had an enjoyable holiday season. There were two, what I consider to be, and I think you will as well, exciting articles in the Macomb Daily recently. One of them, which uplifted a grant that our community development fellow, John Kraus, wrote to put together a tree equity management plan, so that will help us understand what our tree canopy and the health of our trees looks like now and how we can continue to improve and expand the health and the canopy size in the future. So you can check out that article, but you can also talk to John for more details and you'll hear more in the coming months as that develops about the engagement process for that plan. Another article that our fire marshal reminded me of, deputy fire chief, was right up about the new community housing network project at Tofer and Kelly. So I think we're all really excited about that to see some new housing, some housing utilizing unique financing tools, utilizing our updated zoning ordinance. So, yeah, definitely check those two things out when you get a moment. Another thing I wanted to mention was we are in the process of planning our 2024 summer concert series. We will continue to partner with East Point Memorial Library. We are including rarest rock and summer nights in our lineup this year. And in addition to doing the concerts behind city hall and the amphitheater, we're also trying to have some in the parks as well. So we're looking for sponsors, if you know of any individuals or organizations or corporations that would like to make a donation. And we are also looking for nonprofits. While we will not be doing the concession stand this year, what we are offering is up to two tables at every concert for nonprofits to come and set up, giveaway swag or other giveaways, collect any information that they might need for newsletters as well as collect donations. So the concession process was a little bit more cumbersome, but we still wanted to give an opportunity to uplift the great work that our nonprofits are doing in the gateway to Macomb County. Writing lots of grants and looking forward to a engaging and prosperous 2024, and I hope you all are as well. That's it for me. Thanks.
Fire Marshal? Okay. Mr. Albright, you're on deck.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A Happy New Year again to everyone and congratulations, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair and Madam Secretary on your election results this evening. That's all I have, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bichet, Ms. Bichet.
I don't have any comments. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Moody?
Well, first, as everyone is saying, I would like to say Happy New Year to everyone. I'm looking forward to the commission here being very productive this year, so that's all.
Mr. Broll?
Nothing for me tonight.
Busha?
Good evening and Happy New Year to everyone. Ian, I have a question to ask you about that for the nonprofits. So what if they wanted to sell like bottled water or would they be able to sell like concessions themselves?
That would be fine. There is an application that they have to fill out just with basic organization information. So as long as they include that in their application and we know what they're planning on doing at their table.
No special permits or anything would be needed or?
As long as they stick to their table and don't exceed our special events process, then yes, that would be fine.
Because you know my wheels are turning here.
I I understand. I I totally understand. That's why we say table and not tend to or, you know,
Right, right.
Anything more extravagant. So the goal would be to keep it to the table.
Okay, I am just asking because my son has a foundation, him and his friends, that the Hillside Foundation, where they give back and do the grants for like the high school kids and, you know, they did turkey giveaways and a lot of stuff. So I always try to support those kids who grew up in the East Point schools and are giving back to their community all these years.
Absolutely. We'd love to have them.
They have a great golf outing in July at Cracklewood if anyone's interested. And the second thing was, as far as a sponsor, one that you can add to your list if it's not already on is right across the street next to Rite Aid, oh my gosh, the name just escaped me. Chemtech, yes. He has told me before and the foundation has used him to my urging because he says he loves to be involved with the community, but nobody comes to him anymore.
As I think most of you probably know, they were one of the participants in our DDA Holiday Light Program, so, yeah. Well, I'm definitely gonna add them to our list, so thank you for that recommendation.
Okay. Other than that, thank you as always for all that you all do. You're always appreciated in your individual positions. I'm always grateful to learn from each and every one of you something new and looking forward as well to a great year.
Thank you. The I I appreciate everybody's confidence in electing me to chair. It's not something I thought I would enjoy, but I do. I know. thought I would enjoy, but I do. I know. I know. That's all right. But I appreciate it. I enjoy it because I get to work with a great group of people once a month, and we look at this agenda, and, you know, they're leading me, and, but, you know, I get to throw a few thoughts and jabs in every so often. But I appreciate that. You know, I try to avoid the media. If there was a way I could filter social media, I would, short of just turning it off. But I have been just absolutely disgusted by the newspaper reports. So these are credible sources with facts talking about our school district. It is heartbreaking that this is happening. We are in the bottom 5% of the state, if I'm not mistaken. This directly impacts our property values. Something has to get done. People have got to get involved. I, I don't, I, the words in my mind are not appropriate, so I'm not sharing the words that are actually in my mind, but people have got to get engaged. I don't know if it's running for election. I don't know what it is. But when the building's on fire and you're out mowing the grass, it's kind of pointless. So people have got to get engaged. This community has got to get engaged and help these kids get a good education. The success rates are abominable. Off that, this is going to be a great new year. We have new vision. We have new clarity, and I'm just optimistic about this city. Maybe I'm being a bit of a Pollyanna, but I'm just optimistic that we're going to move in the right direction. So thank you, everybody, for your support and for everything that you do on a constant basis, and the crap that you put up with me, and my little jokes here and there, because life is too short to not have a little bit of humor. So with that, can I get a motion to close the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
We have motion?
Support.
We have motion and support. Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Yulinski?
Me, yes.
Ms. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Broll?
Yes.
Chairman DeHunt?
Yes.